Call to Broken Arrow April 16th, City Council meeting to order. Divocation Pastor Busker.
Let's pray together. Lord God, we just invite your presence. Thank you that you're here, that your presence is among us and we trust you to sustain us, to give us wisdom as we do the city's business tonight. We pray for all of our council that they would be given wisdom as they discern what's best for our community and thank you, God, that we have this kind of government here that helps us cooperate, to work with one another for your best, for this community. And we thank you especially that this is Easter time and that the doors of our churches are open to our entire community. We lift up especially our Catholic brothers and sisters that mourn the loss of the Notre Dame Cathedral these days and we thank you for your comfort and for the resilience of folks of faith who will respond to that. We pray your blessings upon this community, that it would continue to grow and prosper and be a vital place for all who enjoy it. We pray that our leadership in this community would continue to set a standard that other cities around our nation could look to for an example of just how well a small community can work together. And we thank you, Lord God, for all your blessings. We don't count any of them for granted. Thank you for being with us this evening. We pray that this would be a wonderful Easter season without tragedy or difficulty, but just celebration in this place. We thank you for Broken Arrow, for all that it means to all of us as a home. In your holy name, we give you thanks. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, roll call please.
Gillespie.
Here.
Wimpy.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Udi.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance of the Fire. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Judge Edgar, if you want to minare the oath of office. Trevor, you gonna see this or?
The judge has the oaths that he's going to administer so the newly re-elected or newly elected members of the district shouldn't have the oath.
We're gonna have two oaths today, oath of office and the law of the oath. You will raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. Aye, and then state your name.
Aye, Scott Udi.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing for the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to my office other than the compensation allowed by law. I further swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a city council member for the City of Broken Arrow to the best of my ability. And then we've got a loyalty oath also. And one more time, raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. Aye, and then state your name.
Aye, Scott Udi.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America and the Constitution and laws of the State of Oklahoma and that I will faithfully discharge my duties as a city council member for the City of Broken Arrow to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you coming.
Well, congratulations to those re-elected and those newly elected and excited to have another new council. Next item on the agenda is election of mayor. Do we have a motion?
I'd nominate Craig.
I have a question. I just, I wanna, before we make nominations, I just wanna hear the official role and responsibilities for the mayor and the vice mayor, please.
Well, certainly, certainly I can address your question. There are specific statutory requirements and duties for the mayor and vice mayor as well, specifically in Title 11, Section 10-104, the council elects a mayor and vice mayor from its ranks. The mayor's responsibilities are basically to be the presiding officer in all the council meetings, also certifies the correct enrollment of all ordinances and resolutions passed by council, and is the statutory and administrative head, ceremonial head of the city government for ceremonial purposes and also purposes of military law. The mayor also signs conveyances, other written obligations for the council as it requires, for example, real estate transactions, accepting deeds, transferring property, things of that nature. In addition, the mayor acts for purposes of emergency powers if there's an emergency declared in the city that's designated by state statutes, specific enumerated provisions for the mayor there. And the vice mayor acts as the mayor in the mayor's absence, disability, or their suspension. In addition, the mayor has a role in the selection of judges, nominating members of the planning commission and also for members of the Board of Adjustments. So those are the statutory and ordinance rules of the powers for the mayor. Also, there are specific designations in our ordinances for other duties and obligations, but I think that provides you a good summary.
Okay. So I wanna make sure everyone feels like the current mayor and vice mayor have done those duties and obligations and feel comfortable with that moving forward. So, okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'd nominate Craig Thurman as mayor.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Okay, next is, well, I wanna thank you for your confidence in me and I will use my 18 years of experience and knowledge and my relationships I built with the local and state and national delegations to help bring Broken Arrow forward.
Next, we have election of vice mayor. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we elect Scott Udi as a vice mayor.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Are there any discussions? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you all. Again, thank you.
Okay, consideration consent agenda. There is one item, item P needs to be removed. It was actually approved on the last council meeting and was erroneously put on this consent agenda, so.
Item what?
Item P was approved at our last council meeting and erroneously put on this agenda, so we need to remove that. Are there any other items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Do we need a formal motion to remove item P?
Yes, please.
I'll move it.
I'm sorry, who moved that?
Vice Mayor Udi.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
And also wanted to move item D.
Yes, okay. Item D, okay. Do we have a motion for that? That's your motion?
Well, I wanna remove item D, so I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda without item D.
Okay, okay.
We're gonna vote on this first. We have discussion. I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second, roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
My only comment is I think this is a big event and for a cannon going off in the
City of Broken Arrow, I think it's big and just to let everybody know that come by the consent agenda, we acknowledged it and there'll be a cannon going off on that particular day at 1:00. So I remember years ago when we had a band director in Broken Arrow that ended up in jail in Oat Morgue for setting off a cannon, so that cannon has been approved by the city council. So I make a motion.
Can we invite everyone out to see?
But don't stand in front of the camera.
Very seldom, you get to see a cannon going off, so anyway.
On Main Street.
Right. So I make a motion that we approve item D.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Counsel, Parks, I was gonna say that the fine for that is $50 to $100, luckily there's no jail time, but.
Back then.
It could've been back then.
They marched him off the field.
That's good, no jail time.
Yeah.
Okay, it's been approved now, so item nine, or item 10, carrying appeals, presentation, recognitions, and awards. We have a recognition for Broken Arrow citizen Jackson Mears for his volunteer work for the City of Broken Arrow. Laurie?
Good evening, counsel, and welcome. Counselor Gillespie, so it's not very often that I get tasked with getting to present these kind of fun things that we get to do and that is really honoring somebody that takes pride in the beautification and just the pride in general of our community. And tonight, I'm fortunate enough that I get to present this item and before I introduce Jackson Mears, he is a 10-year-old at Country Lane Intermediate in Broken Arrow and as part of one of his classes, there was a project called the Genius Hour and one of the things that he did as part of that was called the Passion Service Project. And Jackson, along with his mom, decided, and I don't know if we can go ahead and skip through and show some of the pictures of this, that he took the time to go along and pick up trash. How many bags did you pick up? Seven bags of trash. One of his comments was that he was glad that he wore gloves because quite a bit of it was pretty gross. But we found out about this recently through Keep Broken Arrow Beautiful and at this time I'd like to introduce Dawn Singh, who actually brought the item up at the meeting and we just felt like Jackson really deserved to be recognized this evening. So Dawn?
Well, as most people know, Keep Broken Arrow Beautiful's motto is to keep Broken Arrow clean, beautiful, and safe and we are always striving to get the youth as well as the adults in the community more involved and we were just thrilled to learn about Jackson's endeavors and we felt that we really needed to recognize him, to hopefully encourage more youth to get out there and get involved. It was a great kickoff. This is Keep Oklahoma Beautiful Month, really, and we have our annual Trash Bash, April 27th, in front of the Community Center on South Main, where we'll be collecting trash, recycled, and tires this year. So if you have old tires, we have that available from 8:00 to noon at the Community Center on April 27th and we're just so thankful that Jackson helped get us started with that this month, so thank you, Jackson.
And we do have a recognition award, have a recognition award for Jackson. It says, "In recognition of your recent hard work and volunteering efforts in cleaning up trash in our community."
Go ahead, go.
He doesn't bite.
And real quickly, I also wanna thank Jackson's mom and dad because he obviously had to have transportation to go do this and he's got two very beaming, happy parents standing in the back of the room, so they deserve to be applauded as well, so.
I had a question for Jackson. I had a question. Now, how old are you?
10.
10, okay. About seven years ago, my son and I picked up along this same stretch for Keep Broken Arrow Beautiful and I contest it was very gross. So, good job.
What was your, what was your most interesting thing you found?
That's a dangerous question.
The boxes, all the boxes, the wrappers and all the junk.
Lots of junk, Dawn.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Mayor, I was gonna just add, Dawn touched on the Trash Bash, but the public is welcome to come out and help on the 27th and they supply gloves and invest in everything, so everyone can come out and help clean up our city on the 27th, so.
That's great, yes. Okay, item 11, citizens not be addressed to council, we have no one signed up, so item 12, general council business, consideration discussion of possible approval of and authorization to execute agreement between EMS MC and City of Broken Arrow in participation in the Oklahoma Emergency Medical Services Certified Public Expenditure Program. Chief Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, welcome. Jeremy Moore, fire chief. This item is before you, is a request for you to consider modification to our existing agreement with our third-party billing company, which is called EMS MC. Recent legislation passed last year allowed the State of Oklahoma to participate in a federal program where we can get a greater reimbursement amount for transports that our ambulance makes involving Medicaid patients. Public Consulting Group is a subcontractor for EMS MC and they have performed this service across the United States and other states that already have been participating in this for many years. They have the systems in place, the processes and so forth to be able to do this seamlessly for us and we should see up to an approximate 62% increase in what we're able to collect for the Medicaid-type patients. Annually, the Broken Arrow Fire Department responds to about 400 Medicaid patients. Currently, we collect $348 for each of those calls. By participating in this program, we can collect up to an additional $1,450, so our total collections, if we participate in this program, the federal share program, cost recovery program, we could collect up to $1,798 per call. So we expect that to be close to a $600,000 increase in revenue just because we participate in this federal reimbursement program. So tonight, we would ask that you consider modifying the current agreement with EMS MC, which would allow them to collect the funds, but we would have a 10% fee for participating, for them to collect the funds for us. So if they collected $500,000, we would have to pay them $50,000, the 10%, our net gain would be the 450. So we only pay on what they collect and we only pay after they've made those collections. So I have David Mead here from Public Consulting Group, as well as Major Myrick, our EMS major, and we would entertain any questions.
Any questions, Jeremy, or?
Where does this money go into, what fund does it go into in the city?
All the money should come back into the general fund.
All that goes in the general fund?
Yes, sir.
So this is more of our federal dollars coming back to us?
That's correct. And it was only made possible last year through some lobbying at the state legislature to allow this program to happen. It's been happening on the West Coast for many years and glad to see it came here.
Chief and I've been talking about this for about a year now, we learned about it and I'm very happy that you brought it forward. Thank you.
Christie?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it for both emergency and non-emergency calls? It doesn't matter?
It's not about the call type, it's about the patient themselves. So if the patient, no matter what we're responding on, whether it was a car wreck or a cardiac arrest or whatever the incident were, if that's a Medicaid patient, they're able to, we're able to recoup those funds for Medicaid patients.
Anything else?
Thank you. I'd make a motion to approve and authorize execution of an agreement with EMS MC for participation in the Oklahoma Emergency Medical Services Program.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Consideration, item 12R, 12B, consideration discussion of possible award of the lowest responsible bid for the base bid and additive alternative to Cherokee Pride Construction. Alex?
Good evening, Mayor, counsel, welcome, new counselor. Alex Mills, Director of Engineering and Construction. This one is for the sand volleyball courts that we have attempted to bid out a couple times and had a few struggles with. These were designed to be built at Neenhouse Park, right behind the fire station. It was advertised on March 11th and 18th. The base bid included four sand volleyball courts. Add alternate one included four bleachers with concrete pads for those. Nine bids were received and opened on April 2nd. Two of the bids were non-responsive. The low bidder for the base bid and add alternate one was Cherokee Pride Construction with a total bid of $190,280 versus the engineer's estimate of $195,081.68. This is funded out of the 2011 GeoBond and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Alex?
We need to get it done this time.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we award the lowest responsible bid for the base bid and additive alternate number one to Cherokee Pride Construction Incorporated and approve and authorize execution of a construction contract for the Neenhouse Park sand volleyball courts.
A second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 12C, consideration discussion of possible award of the lowest responsible bid for base bid, alternative and additive alternative to grand line construction, grade line construction, and approve and authorize execution of construction of Old Town Streets. Alex?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the First Street project from Dallas to College. It was funded out of the 2014 GeoBond. The project includes full concrete replacement from Dallas to Commercial and milling and overlaying from Commercial up to College. It also includes some striping to help facilitate the alternative bike lane that we've discussed and it also includes some sidewalk work down from Dallas down to Fort Worth. The project was advertised on February 18th and 25th. Bids were opened on April 2nd. The low bidder for the base bid and alternate one and add alternate two was grade line construction. Their total bid was $433,615.86. The engineer's estimate was $499,698.38 and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions of Alex?
Glad to see it happening.
Yes, sir.
So this is a sister project to the Ash project that's been completed?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
And this one was designed in-house by Travis Smaller, Transportation Manager, so saved some money for the city on that.
I like it. I'd make a motion to award the lowest responsible bid for the base bid, additive alternate number one, additive alternate number two, to Grade Line Construction LLC and approve and authorize execution.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Okay, item 12D, consideration discussion of possible approval of and authorization to execute Resolution Number 1205, a resolution authorizing city attorney to enter into a final journey entry of judgment in the case of Matthew B. Brooks and Kristen K. Mills. Trevor?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. and Mrs. Brooks live in Broken Arrow at 2304 East Queen Street. Fortunately, 2010, they discovered that their house was approximately .8 feet inside and on top of one of our utility easements. It turned out that that utility easement was not needed for public purposes, so as a result, the city actually closed that easement because it wasn't needed for any public purposes. This is the second phase of that closure. It's actually called a vacation, where the homeowner goes to district court, files a lawsuit, and names all of the utility companies as well as the city and asks that the easement for this portion of the 60 feet be vacated. City has no objection. All of the utility companies have either disclaimed or have agreed to it. This will allow for the homeowner's house to be there and it doesn't affect any public rights, so we'd recommend that you pass Resolution Number 1205, authorize its execution so the city attorney's office can enter into this general entry of judgment.
Questions, Trevor?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1205 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. And item 12E, consideration discussion of possible approval and authorization to execute a waiver of conflict of interest between Hall Estle Attorneys at Law and City of Broken Arrow involving a lawsuit by the City of Broken Arrow against Macklin Crowde LLC and Macklin Crowde PLC. Trevor?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. As you know, the city is involved in litigation against the manufacturers and distributors of opioids. It's created a crisis throughout the country. There's approximately 1,200 political subdivisions, including states, counties, that are also suing them across the country. These defendants are large, complicated, complex defendants and they will typically engage large law firms in the locality where they're sued. In this case, two of the defendants have retained Hall Estle as their local counsel to defend this case. Hall Estle currently provides legal services to the City of Broken Arrow, mainly in the area of environmental law, specifically Ken Williams is who we deal with. Mr. Williams with Hall Estle would not be involved at all in the defense of the opioid lawsuit. They actually create what they call a great wall between the attorneys inside the firm and that way, no confidential information is shared between the others. Council may recollect that we did a similar type of waiver with Derner Saunders as they're representing some of the defendant opioid manufacturers in that case and we have Mr. Dodd who does work on that as well. Similar to that, we're requesting that council approve and authorize the execution of the waiver of the conflict of interest. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Trevor?
Make a motion, we approve and authorize execution of the waiver of conflict of interest.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item F, consideration discussion of possible approval of appointment of Richard Carter to the City of Broken Arrow Board of Adjustment for a three-year term to expire May 1, 2022. Trevor?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I do apologize you're gonna hear my voice quite a bit tonight, filling in for development services on some of their items. This item is for the appointment of a member to the city's Board of Adjustments. The Board of Adjustments is a statutory created position under Section 44-101 under Title 11 of the Oklahoma statutes. Basically, wherever a city or municipality exercises zoning powers, which we do, we are required to have a Board of Adjustments. The board consists of five members by statute. By statute, they're required to be appointed for a term of three years and they're only removable for cause upon written charges and after a public hearing and then they can see shall be filled for the unexpired term of any member whose term becomes vacant. My understanding is that currently, we do have a five-board member with four folks on that board, including Harold Tolman, Steve Knight, Randy Cherry, Stanley Ebbets, and then a fifth position that has been unfilled since 2017, I believe with Mr. Pablo Aguirre was nominated and appointed to the Planning Commission. It's also my understanding that Mr. Tolman is going to be stepping down from his position on the Board of Adjustments as of May 1st. As a result, there'll be two positions that will be open as of May 1st. The item that's before you is a nomination by the mayor for Mr. Richard Carter for appointment to the Board of Adjustments. City of Broken Arrow has adopted a policy, not an ordinance, that governs the appointments to boards for the Planning Commission as well as the Board of Adjustments. State statute doesn't speak to how cities go about with the appointments, but the way we do it here is there's a nomination by the mayor for the position. In this case, it's my understanding through the fact sheet, the mayor had nominated Mr. Richard Carter for the three-year term for council's consideration. The other part of the procedure is that although the mayor does get to nominate the appointee, And so that means it requires at least a majority of council to approve that nomination. So, this was the nomination for the first position, is my understanding, so I would turn it over to council for their consideration on this matter.
In 2017, the council changed this policy. Before, we had a policy where each one of us picked a member, and four of us voted to change this in 17. So, I mean, I'm fine with going back to, if we want to, we can go ahead after we get done tonight. In the future, we can talk about changing this back if the council wants to. It's kind of up to council's will what they want to do with it. I'm fine with that. So, but for some reason, this is, this is our, what we voted on, and this is how we're doing it at this time.
It's my, well, it was, and it's my understanding that it, it shows that, that we can make recommendations, that you do nominate the person, that we do have the ability to make recommendations, and so, which I wasn't afforded that, that ability to do.
Nor was I.
Well, I understand that the legal department reached out to Council Parks and to Council Wimpy for recommendations, is what I was told, but...
Well, it's after the nominations were already made.
Right.
Well, I, just, I don't know if we can discuss this now or not, but I, I think it was good. I, I like the idea of the appointment of a council's appointment or a pick for, you know, in fact, one of the persons that I picked for the Planning Commission's still on the Planning Commission. And I think that really bodes well, and, and also in this case here, that the, I'd like to see us at least look at going back, Mayor, to...
I would too.
And then, I think it'd make it easier for you.
Yes.
And with each one have our appointment. But, I have to say, they did reach out to me, and the two people that I had given, the names I'd given, were not the, any one of the two here, but I, I don't have any problems. Richard would do an excellent job, and that's what I told him. So, my point is, is that I did give them two names, and neither one of them were picked, and I understood that because it was the mayor's pick on that. But I'd like for us to look at going back into the way that we did do it. So, I'd make a motion that we appoint Richard Carter to serve a three-year term on the Board of Adjustment to expire May the 1st, 2022.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
I'm going to abstain because I feel that I wasn't given the opportunity as a councillor to nominate someone, and I'm going to abstain at this time.
Wimpy.
I'm voting no, just because I feel like I wasn't afforded the opportunity to make a recommendation.
And I'm voting yes, even though my selection wasn't picked.
I found it best not to talk about these things, so I'm going to vote yes.
Just stay.
I'll vote yes also.
So, Parks and Udi, yes. Thurman?
Yes. Item, item 12G, we are going to table this due to a, a conflict in the state statute at the next meeting.
Yes, if I may briefly make a mention on that. Like I said, the state statute governs the term of office for Board of Adjustment, and it's not, you can't deviate from it. In this case, it's for a three-year term. I think there was a miscommunication in terms of trying to abide by a city ordinance that requires staggered terms for the Boards of Adjustment. I think in an effort to avoid having two terms that will come up at the same time, they appointed one for three, and then they nominated, they nominated one for three, and then one for two years. That's not allowed under state statute. So, my recommendation is that we table this item for consideration at the May 7th meeting so that the recommendations could be heard, and we can also fix the fact sheet or request for action sheet so it reflects it would be for a three-year term in compliance with state statute.
This will not delay any matters that are pending before the Board of Adjustment, will it?
No, Vice Mayor, the next meeting for Board of Adjustments is May the 7th, I'm sorry, May the 13th.
Okay.
If there is an appointment made at the May 7th, that would be in sufficient time to hear the one pending matter that I know.
My understanding is there's matters pending, and it's important that those be heard in a timely manner.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I think a part of leadership is taking responsibility, and I want to apologize to, there's a resident in the audience tonight that came before the Board of Adjustments back in February and is now going to have to come back in May. And quite frankly, Development Services did not handle this correctly. It should have been handled long before February, and I owe that person a sincere apology for that, and I'd like for council to get this fixed so this person can get a fair hearing. And regardless of what the outcome is, that's not my job to do. It's my job to make sure my people do their job, and it wasn't done, and so I apologize to the council and to the applicant, and hopefully they'll get a fair hearing next month.
Do we have a motion to table?
Make a motion to table. Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 13, preview ordinances or are none. Item 14, ordinances, consideration discussion and possible adoption of ordinance number 3562. Trevor?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, the item before you for consideration is the final step in a zoning process related to a QuickTrip property located at the northeast corner of Kenosha Street and 23rd Street. This basically codifies a zoning change for QuickTrip's property from Commercial General to Commercial Neighborhood, and also with the PUD overlay of 254. Again, as it's just codifying what preliminarily council had already had done, recommendation from staff is that council adopts ordinance number 3562. In addition, there is an emergency clause associated with this so that it could take effect immediately. If we didn't do the emergency clause, it would take 30 days for this zoning codification to take effect. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Trevor?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3562.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Move for emergency clause?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 14B, consideration discussion and possible adoption of ordinance number 3563. Trevor?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is similar to the last one. It's the final step in the replating process, or rezoning process for some of Alpha Laval's property located east of 9th Street and one-half mile south of Houston. Again, the ordinance before you codifies the zoning change from agricultural to light industrial for Alpha Laval's property. It's my understanding that they've already replatted the property. As such, staff recommends that you adopt ordinance number 3563, and this also has an emergency clause. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on the matter.
Any questions, Trevor?
I'd make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3563.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 14C, consideration discussion and possible adoption of ordinance number 3564. Trevor?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On this item, my recommendation is to table it until May the 7th. It's my understanding that we just discovered that there was an error in the address description and the title. Tabling it to the 7th won't, won't be prejudicial to the applicant, and it'll allow us to make sure that we're complying with the, the Open Meetings Act by having an accurate description.
Motion table?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 14D, consideration discussion and possible adoption of ordinance number 3565.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, this is the final step for the rezoning for Rhonda Norton, Senator II. They replatted the property that's located near Omaha and Aspen Avenue. The zoning is going to be changed from Commercial General to Commercial Heavy along with the overlay, laid accompanying PUD. The ordinance before you codifies a zoning change from Commercial General to Commercial Heavy with the PUD overlay. Staff recommends that you adopt ordinance number 3565 and also approve the emergency clause.
Any questions, Trevor?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3565.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Move for emergency clause?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 14E, consideration discussion and possible adoption of ordinance number 3566. Trevor?
Thank you, council, council and mayor. The item before you is the final step for zoning change from single-family residential to downtown mixed use. Again, it codifies a zoning change for property that's located south of Houston Street and a half mile east of Elm Place. My understanding is plating requirements have been waived because it's already been plated. As such, staff recommends that you adopt ordinance number 3566 and also approve the emergency clause.
Any questions, Trevor?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number 3566.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Move for the emergency clause?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 15, remarks and inquiries by governing body members. I just want to say congratulations again to everyone that won their election. I know we have a couple changes, but, or one change actually, and a little learning curve, but I'm sure that we'll all continue to work as a, as a great body to continue this great city, so I'm excited about it. I don't know if anyone else has any comments?
Well, I did dovetailing off of what councillor Wimpy discussed, that not only is the trash bash coming up on April 27th, but at our last youth city council meeting, we discussed the, since the city council has adopted a stretch of Main Street as for its trash bash, the youth city council has expressed a desire, at least some of them, maybe two, I'm not sure, have expressed a desire to pick up that mile as part of a, their service. And, so I told them I would meet them there with trash bags, and I would certainly welcome any of the other councillors to join me, but bring gloves.
Yes.
And I too would like to welcome our newest member and am looking forward to the next four years and what we can do to bring the, keep the city moving forward.
I'm looking forward to working with everyone. I'm so honored to be a part of the government of Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. I love the city, and I admire all the work that you all have done before me, so I'm ready to go.
Yay.
I have a couple of comments. Certainly, welcome to you, to aboard. I look forward to the disagreement that probably will come, and that's good. Part of the process is kind of working things out and doing that, so, welcome aboard. I did want to make a couple of comments about the election. This was my sixth election, probably my toughest one. Not so much number-wise, just so much work-wise. And I do appreciate all the help and support that I had, because I wouldn't have made it without that. My wife, Myrna, was continually keeping me going and keeping me in prayer and, don't get so mad, just, you know, count to 10. I did, you know, enjoy, visit with a lot of people, met a lot of people. I did run into some problem though with the firefighters' union. I think there's a, a bigger problem here than what I had envisioned or thought of. I tried to express to them, I met with them before, and they, that we can only work with them through the city manager by law, and the city attorney has affirmed that. But there's such a, as the head of the union said, there's such a major discord amongst the union, and he said the morale is the lowest that it's ever been. That really caught me off guard because of all my years in Broken Arrow, I'm used to seeing positive reactions from city employees. And in fact, it was a pretty detrimental evening. A lot of their terminology I don't understand, and I don't have the time to go through it. You know, they have their own books that they look at. They call it collective bargaining agreement and administrative operating procedure. And they have terminology that's just like a foreign language nearly to me. So to come out and expect me to know everything for it, I thought was beyond. So I got to think and watch, one of the things that we can start helping, of course, they and us both are really concerned about the public safety. So anything with public safety, we need to be dealing with it, but as far as the council's perspective, we deal with it through the city manager. One of the things I thought that we might start at, after giving this a lot of thought, is there's a lot of grievances filed. Grievance is something that they don't agree with, or they thought they was treated unfairly, I believe. And there's a lot of grievances filed that really we don't know about. Now, the arbitration, when they bring an arbitrator in, we get the, we get the information back from that. So we know whether we won or whether the union won, or what the situation is. When I say we, that means the staff or the union and the staff as, as they come about, which side does arbitrator come down on. So we get that, but I think it would be good for us to know what the grievances are themselves. I think it would enhance us, our information to know how serious the problem is by looking at the grievance. I, I question whether we can make a decision in that. I'm not saying that. That would be a legal question.
Maybe like an, an update?
Yes, an update, but I would like to know those grievances. I know in the last three years, there was 88 grievances filed. I think that took a lot of staff's time and a lot of money involved. And I'm trying to be proactive here in trying to work with the union to see exactly what the problem is. Now, I know there might not ever be a time where we all get together and have a big party and everything is fine, but I want to make sure that they enjoy their job, and from what they said from the discord, the morale is really low. So I want to do whatever we can. I think we need to do what we can to try to enhance that. So I think a good starting point at least would be to look at the grievances, let's discuss them, and, uh, I, 'cause I'd like to know how, uh, serious those grievances are.
Now, I'll add, I've talked to a lot of the union members that are not, the morale is not low. So, it's not everyone, but I agree with exactly what you're saying.
I, I had a similar meeting to Counselor Parks, um, and, uh, uh, I think, uh, I think the best, when, whenever there is concern, the best, the best, uh, uh, way to, is lay it out in sunshine. And so I too have asked, uh, uh, I've asked that, that we, you know, if there's problems, let's, let's have meetings about it, and let's deal with it, and, because I think it's important that we all, uh, figure out a way to, to, to keep our city the safest city in Oklahoma, and one of the best cities to live in. Uh, and, uh, and so I look forward to being able to have that discussion as we move forward.
Well, if I can add, I'd be glad to provide the council members with what we deal with. And just the first thing I wanna say is that the city doesn't file any grievances. Uh, by statute, the unions are allowed to, to file grievance if they believe there's been a violation of the contract, and then it's my responsibility ultimately to adjudicate, to act upon, make a decision. And if in fact, if in fact they don't agree with the decisions that, that I render, 'cause that's the statute, then they can go to arbitration. Um, you know, for example, council today received, uh, a notification on arbitration award that the city won, um, that was filed by John Cockrell and the fire union involving an outside complaint that was filed against a firefighter paramedic. And council has a chance to, to take a look at that, and I received that arbitration Friday. Well, shortly after I received that notification, I received eight notifications from John Cockrell that they wanna file for eight more arbitrations. Five of them are related to alleged, uh, vacation denials. Uh, one was, uh, regarding captain's testing, one was regarding battalion chief testing, and one was regarding an alleged health and safety violation. And so, basically, those eight, those eight grievances that they've asked to file for arbitration will be out there until such time as we pick an arbitrator. And then once that arbitrator is picked, then a, a hearing will be held. And in many cases, uh, I can't give you the exact number, but I will as a part of it, uh, at the proverbial eleventh hour, they, they cancel, uh, the arbitration, but we still have to pay a portion of the arbitrator's fee. Uh, you saw what the, what the bill was for this arbitration, which was attached, which is a public record now, is basically, first, the arbitrator alone, it cost eight thousand dollars. So the city's portion was a little over four thousand, if I recall correctly, and that doesn't include the time of the attorney or the chief's time to prep for the arbitration. So I do think that this is, is a very good start for the council to hear what is being submitted. Uh, I have to make sure that I stay within, uh, the, the collective bargaining guidelines and the state statutes, because, uh, conversations actually make, can make you all witnesses involved in, in the arbitrations. So we have to be, I have to work within legal, uh, parameters and so forth. But I do believe that the public needs to be aware of, of the grievances that have been filed, which range from anywhere from, uh, filing arbitration over a form that they don't wanna fill out, uh, to go to training, and it goes, there's, I could go on and on uh, with regard to, to the arbitrations, but I would very much like to provide that counsel and the public this information.
Well, and I'll bring this up just because I wanna try to get some type of closer to the, you know what I mean, some kind of a amicable-type situation, because it, that night I was there was not amicable. And the ones that were there certainly, uh, nodded their head whenever the, uh, uh, union said there was a lot of discord and the morale was the lowest they've ever seen it. Uh, uh, it just kinda took me off, uh, guard. So, anything we can do to try to support them, I want them to know, and I told them that night that I supported them. We've got one of the best fire department, and especially, uh, police department, uh, uh, in the, in the country, you know? The facts prove that out. So I think we're getting two different sets of facts, and I think we need to, ultimately, we need to get all that data together to see what's the truth.
Be glad to share that information with the governing body.
Any more comments from the governing body? Okay, we'll move to item sixteen, remarks and updates by city manager. Michael?
Okay, the last meeting, I didn't have any reports. You don't get that lucky to see me. Uh, there, there is a lot going on in our community, so, uh, I'd like to, to welcome Councilmember Gillespie. Look forward to working with you, um, and also to the key, the council members and everyone in the audience tonight. I do have a number of things I would like to report on. Um, they fall in the areas of communications, transparency, economic development, transportation, roads, employee announcements, and some community updates. Uh, first off, with regard to community transparency, I wanna let the council know that we will be delivering to you the budget message for, or actually, the actual budget, I should say, for FY twenty-twenty by April thirtieth, so you will be receiving your, uh, your booklet, and we will be scheduling a special meeting to review the budget sometime in May. So the administration will be reaching out to you and, and picking a date. I think that because of the, um, all that's involved with the budget, we should do it by way of a special meeting, so we'll see everyone's availability. In regards to economic development, I wanted to let the council members know that, uh, the Elm Place in New Orleans, the small area plan, the consultant's review of, of the area, we're going to have a public meeting on Thursday, May ninth, and that's gonna be the date that the consultant is going to present, uh, to the community his recommendations based on all the research and the, uh, surveys and the interviews that were done as a part of that process. And then the next step would be is for the city council to take the plan under advisement, and then gives the administration some direction for next steps in regards to the recommendations from, from the consultant. So we're looking forward to having the public meeting. There will be maximum notification of the meeting, uh, where it's, where it's held, when it's gonna be held. Uh, we'll, basically, for the next few weeks, we'll start putting out there, and I'd like to invite all the council members as well, the public, to, to attend. A couple of updates on some road projects, and also some other improvements. Uh, I may have mentioned the council that we're looking at this. We are gonna be installing streetlights on Hillside Drive from approximately QuickTrip up to Charleston's area. Uh, that request has been made to PSO. It's very dark there. And, uh, Rocky Hinkle, the, uh, Street and Stormwater Director, has made that request, so hopefully the next six months, we'll get that additional lighting up. We see that request from the public, and so we're following up on it. Uh, I, earlier, Alex mentioned that First Street is, uh, actually been, has been awarded. We'll get started. Well, Ash Street is just about finished, just except for the striping. Uh, great job. There was some additional parking that was put in there, the diagonal parking to help us with our downtown. Also wanna let you know is that we are gonna be going back behind, uh, AVB Bank, the old operational buil-, or their current operational buildings, and actually doing some additional improvements, sidewalks and some, some parking there, so that you're gonna see some additional work on the south side of Ash. Also, a lot of questions about two oh ninth. Uh, I understand that they're just about finished with the drainage box, and after that, they're actually gonna start laying, uh, asphalt for the road. And according to Alex's latest schedule, uh, our goal is to get that road open right at, right before or right after a school opens. And so just in a few more months, we're actually gonna be traveling and connecting our community, so I'm very excited about that. Uh, with regard to community updates, I wanted to let the governing body know that next Monday and Tuesday, the four finalists for the chamber CEO, president, uh, there's, there're gonna be face-to-face interviews for those, uh, for those four folks, uh, trying to find the, the top person to be our next chamber CEO. Uh, on the committee from the city is, is myself, the mayor, and Vice Mayor Udi are on, on the committee. Uh, we have four excellent candidates. We have one candidate that is local, and then we have three candidates, uh, it was a nationwide search, uh, all very qualified individuals, and I'm very excited to, uh, get that process started, with hopefully, it would be great if we could at least make an announcement before Rooster's Day, Rooster Days. So, my goal is to try to get down to, to one or two, and then we'll go from there. But obviously, we don't wanna rush it, because we gotta make sure we do background checks and check everyone out about, about their credentials. Uh, I do wanna mention something that I think is very important. On Friday, April twenty-sixth, the police department is gonna have their drug drop-off event. There was a press release that went out about the importance of folks being able to drop off their prescription drugs, and there's a press release that we have, and I wanna thank the chief for coordinating this, uh, the Broken Arrow Community Center, the Broken Arrow Police Department booth inside, in conjunction with the Broken Arrow Senior Health Fair. And so we'll be putting out more information about the, uh, the potential to drop those, those drugs off safely. I also wanted to mention that a couple weeks ago, the city council appointed, uh, myself along with, uh, Councilmember Wimpy to attend the school district's redefine-ready. Uh, and we had our first meeting this past Tuesday night, the ninth, where actually we had, for me, my kids are grown, so I had to rethink exactly what it meant to be ready to go to college. And obviously, in this ever-changing en- environment that we live in, making sure that our kids are ready to go to college. So it was a great meeting, a lot of community leaders, in addition to all the leadership of the school district. We have, we need an alternate, so I just need the council members, probably at the next meeting, 'cause there's still three meetings, is to, to pick an alternate in case Councilmember Wimpy can't make it. So there's, so that way we have some continuity there. But I just wanted to mention, it was, I, I, I really enjoyed it. Councilmember Wimpy, you may wanna add something to that?
No, I agree. It wa- it was, it was great to hear all the ideas and, and, and everybody collaborating together of what exactly a graduate from Broken Arrow High School looks like, and to be ready to go on from that point, so.
Uh, having a little trouble with regard to, to trash bags. Uh, the trash bags that we get at the stores, obviously, we're trying to, uh, make sure we have a supply, but our, our suppliers having some issues. We're trying, uh, trying to work through them, Lee Zirk is, and so hopefully, we're getting it resolved, but in case any calls, uh, you know, folks love their trash bags. I don't need to say anymore, so.
The free ones, yeah.
Can you trade them for carts?
Well, I can tell you, if you saw the fact that there was a, uh, there was social media posts the other day with regard to where we are, and the pos-, the comments were extremely positive. Now, obviously, where we are in that process is that we still have about forty-five days left in the pilot. And then after that, uh, it's my recommendation that we tabulate all the results, do the final surveys, and then we put the recycling committee that the council pointed back together. Uh, we told them that we would let them look at this, so probably sometime in the July, August timeframe, the recommendation is gonna be coming with regard to, uh, how do we move forward with regard to curbside collection for recyclables. But so far, you've seen the feedback. It's been very positive. Lee Zirk and Russell have done just yeoman's work in, in terms of, uh, shepherding us through this. I'm gonna thank both of them. Uh, a couple of, just, uh, employee updates. I wanna mention something that you talk about a great city. Um, the chief of police told me that we have two hundred and fifty-seven applications to become a police officer in the city of Broken Arrow, and that's for five positions from the division tax. We have five more with this budget. We will have, uh, hired all twenty. And then we normally have between four and six retirees. And so really, you have probably nine to eleven, uh, positions gonna be open. We're gonna look at possibly trying to hire a person too early in order to try to get them on the street. That was something several council members have mentioned, so we are gonna look at that. Uh, but to tell you the, the quality of agency we have when you have essentially ten or eleven positions, and you have two hundred and fifty folks who wanna come to work for us. So that says a lot about the leadership and the quality of our community. So, um, that just tells you a lot about our city. I also wanted to mention that this week is Animal Control Officer Employee Appreciation Week. Uh, our folks at the animal shelter do an amazing job. You, you take a look at, at the quality of, of the work that they do. The new programs are starting. Uh, we maintain a consistent ninety percent adoption rate. And so I know Lanny Dampf and his team do a great job. I wanna thank the, the chief for, uh, his leadership, and also his majors that are responsible for this. Major Marks, I believe, heads that up, so, uh, I'm gonna say thank you. And also, we had two employees in the Parks Department that I've thought were worth, worthy of mentioning is, uh, we had Russ Silger and Bradley Thomas. They completed their certification programs to, uh, it's called Certified Playground Safety Inspector Certification, and then they got their, their certifications in, from, after they took the test. And so, you know, you don't think a lot about what goes into planning and taking care of our Parks program. This tells you the quality, the people that are out there trying to strive to make sure that, that our parks are, are ready to go when people come out to them. So I just wanna, I'm gonna thank Phil for letting me know about this, and just recognize both of those hard-working employees, so. And then the final item I have to tell you is that council member was made aware of this by, by Trevor Dennis, is we're gonna have to do the annexation over that we did, uh, two weeks ago, unfortunately. Uh, once again, Development Services, there was a problem with the notice, uh, with, when, when the actually public hearing was supposed to be held. Uh, it was held at five-thirty, but it was listed at six-thirty, and so we're actually going to have to go through that process again. And so, uh, the applicant has been, has been made aware of that, and is, uh, is, understands, and will be here, and whatever needs to be done, we'll have to do the radius report, and we're gonna get that process started and get it back before council in May-June timeframe. So I have.
That was actually a short report for two weeks.
Yeah.
And the next meeting won't be twenty-three minutes either. I'll have that meeting. Uh, next, we do have an executive session, so I entertain a motion for a brief recess to go into, uh, Bama and Beta.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Gillespie?
Here.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Uh, item three, consideration and consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's second. Roll call, please.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Uh, there's, uh, no public hearings, appeals, or presentations, no general authority business, no executive session.
Make a motion with adjourn.
Second.
Motion's second. Roll call, please.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Wimpy?
Yes.